Good morning and welcome to the regular Board of County Commissioners meeting. We do begin each of our meetings with an invocation. This morning, we have Lisa Crump from the Church for All Nations. We invite you to stand and join us if you'd like.
Can you hear me? Okay. Lord God, we thank you for this new day that you have made. Your word tells us in lamentations that great is your faithfulness. And Lord, we see that across our county, across our state, across our land. Father, we just call upon you today and ask that you will bring your peace, Lord, that you will bring your wisdom, your counsel, your protection, your safety, Lord, all things that are needed, Lord, to this county, this beautiful place that you have made. Lord God, we thank you for the extra provision of rain that we have had this summer, Lord, that has kept fires and other things away from harming us. Lord, as we come into a time when we've just seen a terrible assassination in our country, Lord God, we ask that you will bring, Father, just more civility, more restraint, Father, more peace and respect for human life, Lord God. This makes me think of our schools, Lord God, as I just heard this morning about a school having students bringing guns in our own backyard, Lord of Evergreen, that happened recently and other places. Lord, our schools have just assembled and, Lord, we are all about our children, our grandchildren. And, Lord, we ask that you will protect, Lord, on campuses from all levels, Lord God, from grade school to high school to universities. And, Lord, we do pray with those that are grieving, with the Kirk family and others that are grieving, Lord, schools. And, Father, this makes me want to pray for our law enforcement, Lord, for officials that are first responders, Lord, that you will keep them safe as they head to emergencies, Lord, whether it's medical or from violence, Lord God, or anything in between. Father God, I pray for this meeting, that you will bring, Father, the agreement that's needed on the agenda items. Lord, I pray that you will bless and keep each of our commissioners, their households, their families, the things that concern them, and, Lord, the audience as well, Father, that you will bring us into your will for this area, for our beautiful county and for our state and for our nation, and what that means really to the rest of the world. Lord God, your word tells us that you only require a few things of us, to love mercy, to act justly, and, Lord, to walk humbly before you. So, Father, we ask that you will bring justice, that you will bring humility where that's needed, that you will be our confidence. So, your word says that you are our confidence. So, we call upon you to lead this meeting and to guide it. And we love you, Lord, and we love each other. We love Colorado, El Paso County, and in Jesus's name, I pray these things. Amen.
Commissioner Applegate, if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Item three.
Item number three is staff emergency items, and I'm unaware of any staff emergency items today.
Item four.
Item number four is changes, postponements, and notice of the next meeting. I'm unaware of any changes or postponements to today's agenda, and the next meeting will be Thursday, September 25th at nine o'clock for land use.
Okay, before we move on to item five, I will recognize Commissioner Applegate.
Can I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Williams for this morning's meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Motion to excuse Commissioner Williams. And a second, I will call the roll, Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that passes for zero. Item five.
Item number five is the consent calendar, including items 5A through 5N4.
And I do just want to make a quick note, because we had a question from a community member before this meeting began about the CHAFI program specifically, and I was able to get the answer that that is named after the individual who began that program, so that's what CHAFI is, and that is a program related to foster youth. So with that, I will ask if there's anyone in the audience today who wishes to speak on an item on the consent calendar. Okay, seeing none in the room, and do we have anyone online? Okay, then I will bring it up here for any comments or motion.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. I will call the roll, Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that passes for zero. Item six.
Item number six is the proclamation recognizing Creek Week 2025. Bill Weisong, Commissioner, Board of County Commissioners.
Make your motion proclaiming and recognizing Creek Week 2025. Whereas, El Paso County residents and visitors enjoy a rich array of natural resources, including forests, grasslands, riparian areas, lakes, creeks, and expansive variety of open spaces. And whereas, among these, the Fountain Creek Watershed stands out as a valuable amenity encompassing Fountain Creek, related wetlands, and existing trails. The watershed has served as a major recreational resource for children and adults for generations and is in a critical for agriculture in the Pike's Peak region. And whereas, the Fountain Creek Watershed District collaborates with El Paso County, the city of Colorado Springs, Colorado Springs Utilities, and various other municipalities and community organizations to coordinate the 12th Annual Creek Week Cleanup to encourage the protection, restoration, and maintenance of the Fountain Creek Watershed. And whereas, Creek Week is a litter cleanup, education, and restoration effort throughout the watershed set for September 27th and runs through October 5th. It is the largest cleanup event in Colorado. And whereas, Creek Week programs and activities are designed to raise awareness of water quality and littering issues within the watershed, to encourage organization and individuals to collect litter and debris and make Fountain Creek Watershed cleaner and safer. And whereas, businesses, churches, schools, nonprofits, neighborhood associations, youth groups, service clubs, and all individuals are encouraged to form a Creek Crew to clean up at the Creek Week project site. And whereas, Creek Week litter removal activities will reduce pollution in our creeks and remove clogs in our waterways that can lead to flooding, provide for safer drinking water supply, support agricultural resources, and enhance wildlife habitat and property values. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners for El Paso County, Colorado hereby recognize September 27th through October 5th as Creek Week in El Paso County and encourage citizens to help protect, restore, and maintain our waterways by participating in Creek Week activities done this 23-day, 23rd day of September 2025 at Colorado Springs, Colorado. The Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County, Gary Geitner, Chair, Holly Williams, Vice Chair, Gori Applegate, Member, Lauren Nelson, Member, Bill Weisong, Member, attested by Steve Sliker, County Clerk and Recorder.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, that has been moved and seconded, and we have some guests here today to come up.
Morning Commissioners, I'm pleased to introduce Ally Shook with the Fountain Creek Watershed District. I've been involved in this event for many, many years and see the growth and the spread across our county, and the depth and the number of people is astounding what she will get to, but I just wanted to acknowledge and introduce her and all of her efforts in our community. And as a former county employee, she's gone on to great things, so look forward to hearing from Ally. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, Ally Shook, Fountain Creek Watershed District. How many of you have already used water today? Probably all of us. We're water users, we're water enjoyers. We live in the most beautiful area in the country, and we are here as the Watershed District to ensure that those waterways stay clean and safe for today and for future generations. And so that's why 12 years ago, I said, we need to get our citizens out in this resource to help them understand kind of what we're up against, but also to know that little efforts make big differences. And here we are, 11 years later, we've engaged 25,000 volunteers in removing 175 tons of trash. It's amazing. These are all volunteers who are willingly giving up their evening, their weekend, with their kiddos. We have preschool kids cleaning their little schoolyard. We have seniors out in their wheelchairs. It is an accessible way to get out there and make sure that everyone's doing their part, because it's not just my job to take care of the watershed, it's all of ours as users and folks that live here. I do want to recognize Commissioner Weisong and Applegate, who joined our Fountain Creek Watershed District Board of Directors. It's been great having them at the table and having their voices heard. And also, the county overall has been a wonderful partner since day one with Creek Week. We have a shared storage space that we utilize at the Bear Creek Shop, so that's been a great asset for us to use. We also do our Creek Week Crew Leader Training over at the Bear Creek Office as well. So it's been a wonderful partnership, and we just encourage everyone to pick a date, pick a location, and pick it up. There's three cleanups that are being supported by the county this year, the Bear Creek Dog Park, the Nature Centers, so we encourage everyone to get out there and have a good time at Creek Week.
Commissioner Weisong.
Yes, Ally. Could you explain to everyone the size and scope of the Fountain Creek Watershed District?
That's a great point. The Fountain Creek Watershed is huge. It runs from Palmer Lake to Pueblo and encompasses 927 square miles. We, as a special district, are supporting all eight member governments within that, so Palmer Lake and Monument to the north, Green Mountain and Manitou to the west, Colorado Springs, Fountain, Pueblo, and both counties.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Great, well, we appreciate you being here today. I know this is a beloved tradition by many. So with that, are there any other comments that you'd like to add, or I'll bring it up here for additional comments from Commissioners, if not?
I would love to, when we're finished, to take a quick picture with you, if you don't mind.
We will absolutely do that. Commissioner Nelson.
Can you share a little about the work that you're doing in the committee that our municipal commissioners serve on?
Absolutely, yeah. The Watershed District was established 16 years ago in 2009 to, again, support all of our member governments. We're all in this together in terms of managing and taking care of our water. That includes water quality, water quantity, and also restoration work. We have a lot, we've identified a billion dollars of needed work throughout the watershed, and we've just started scratching that surface due to funding, our funding situation. We're not a, we don't have an established funding source at this time, so we've been doing creek restoration work to the tune of about $40 million on the main stem of Fountain Creek, so the restoration arm is one of the arms, and then the other is the public education and outreach. And that's where we're in the schools, we're working with different community groups to see what they can do to help support this initiative. We also established the state's first brew shed alliance, because the number one ingredient in beer is water, and so we like to say, clean water equals great beer, and that's where we can kind of meet folks where they're at. We do a monthly liquid lecture in those breweries, where we're teaching people about watershed health in a casual manner and with a little beer discount as well. So, yeah, we have a wide breadth of programming and just have a lot more to do in this community, and we're excited to step into the future of the Watershed District.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
You have a comment as well, but yeah, thank you for your work on the watershed, we appreciate it. And then, I know my neighborhood was affected by some of the work, or some of the destruction of the creek, so the work on Southmore, that was really awesome to see, you know, the creek. We built the embankment out, got it where it's safe now, now there's a walking trail down there, and hopefully, if there's not a 100-year flood or 500-year flood in the next, you know, few years, I think we're okay, I think we're pretty, pretty well off. And I'm sure the businesses back there especially appreciate that, and the homes back there as well, so.
Absolutely, yeah. He's talking about Southmore Drive is a project we just completed this year, $7.2 million. It was a huge wall in the city of Fountain, they actually had to close the road for the last five years, so the district stepped in to support the city of Fountain, Fountain came in as a funding partner as well, but that's just the degree of projects we're looking at are millions of dollars per project to keep the watershed resilient.
Okay, with that, I think that we are ready to move on to a vote, and then we will take a brief recess to do a photograph, so I'll begin with Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that passes for zero, and we will take that recess for a photograph. Okay. I'll call this meeting back to order, and we are on item seven. I don't believe we have any countywide elected officials in the room. I'll check to make sure there are none online, so we'll begin with Commissioner Weisong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going first, I'm not going to take all the thunder, but the board was in Washington, DC last week, and I took the opportunity to meet with the U.S. Forest Service, BLM, talk about mitigation in the forests to help control, you know, the wildfire issues, and then also met with the Federal Communications Commission to understand more about hardening of cell sites within the wui on the western side of El Paso County, and just other kind of general issues, and more to come on that. This week, just came from the Homefront Military Network honoring the Brave Breakfast that was held at the Broadmoor, which was a great fundraiser for the troops and their families, and many, many sponsors, but just one of those unique things that in 2024, more than $250,000 was issued in emergency financial assistance grants. More than 5,500 service member veterans and family members were served. So, it is a very active group, and it was actually started by City Councilor Nancy Hingem's father and one of his buddies that served in the Vietnam War. Also, on Sunday, I had the privilege to help open up a community park in Monument. This was at the Trinity Church, and one of the unique things that this was all pretty much self-sustaining, local funds, and they put in an ADA playground for the community. It's the first one in that area. And then, as far as talking about the Creek Week, excuse me, Saturday is the kickoff, and as Ally talked about, there's a number of different activities. Pick one and provide a couple hours to help clean up the watershed. So, thank you.
Commissioner Nelson.
As mentioned, several of us were able to attend the DC fly-in last week, put on by the Colorado Springs Chamber, and it was just a great opportunity to hear from our Colorado representatives that are based federally in DC and connect with business partners and other elected officials from our community. It's kind of funny to think about flying out there to make those connections, but it just seems that's the way it works, that by being able to sort of leave our day-to-day work, we can then make the time or take the time to engage differently with other local leaders, and so it was a great opportunity. And for me personally, it was one of the coolest experiences of my life. It was the first time I've been in DC, and so just be able to get a tour of the Capitol and be witness to so much of our nation's history and the location and so many of the monuments, and just remember the principles that our country was founded upon, and it was very timely that last week on the 17th was Constitution Day, and so just as Commissioners, we took an oath of office to protect the Constitution, and it just, it meant so much to me to be able to spend that time out there, so I'm really grateful. And this week, though, it's a very busy week. Yesterday, the Pike's Peak Library Joint Appointment Committee met to reaffirm the recommendation that was previously given for a volunteer to step in as on the library trustees board, and just at the request of City Council, they asked that we reaffirm that so that they then could bring that back for reconsideration. Previously, this commission board had already approved that volunteer, and so hopefully things will move forward and we can get that slot filled. And then tomorrow, there's a Board of Health meeting, and we'll also be looking at the budget during a work session. Then in the afternoon is a Region 16 Abatement Council meeting, where we'll continue to consider proposals of that funding requests, and this is the third time that I will be saying that I am attending the CSU Extension Advisory Committee, because it's had to be rescheduled the last couple of times, but hopefully it'll actually happen tomorrow night. So, yeah, thanks.
Commissioner Applegate.
Thank you. Yes, and I was also in attendance to the DC fly-in last week, and, I mean, just amazing, couple Capitol tours, talking to the Colorado delegation, talking to our representatives in Congress, as well as hearing from our two senators. And like they said, two multiple people had said, you know, the minute that place loses its aura, the minute a place loses its glory, and just how amazing it is to you, that's when you need to quit whatever job you're in, whether you're in Congress or you're a staffer, if you're not impressed, I mean, because it's just amazing, there's just so much history in the city, and just, and it's amazing that, you know, what our founders did, you know, to form the nation, and just the things they created, and the things they built, and they built this government, you know, for the people, by the people, and of the people, so. But very cool, the networking too as well, and a special shout out too to the chamber for just hosting that event for everybody. I mean, that was great that they got everyone together, just the local business leaders and the local electeds together to fly out there to Washington, DC. When I returned back last Friday, I attended the Downtown Partnership Breakfast, that was over at Colorado College at the arena, and that was a good event as well to kind of hear from like what their future planning is, Colorado Springs for the downtown area, and kind of what they have in the distance, whether it's just a couple of years out or 20 years out, for that matter, so. That's all I have for this week.
So, I too attended the DC trip. I'll just mention a few of the items that I have this week, most of which has been mentioned, the Board of Health meeting, and also Budget Workshop, Region 16 Opioid Council. I also have Regional Building this week, so a very busy week. I really just kind of echo many of the comments that have been made, but also want to share that we had many successful meetings with our delegation. The county has been very proactive. Of course, we are a political subdivision of the state, which means we carry out some state functions, and sometimes those are functions that are passed down to the state from the federal government, so we have programming, federal programming that we are administering here, and that means that we have an interest in sharing with our delegation what, how those things are working on the ground. Our delegation, I think, works very hard, but when you are up at the level of working in DC, understanding how those decisions that you are making to programming affects us on the ground, is difficult, and so we were able to share some of what that looks like on the ground, and our entire delegation was receptive to that, so we really appreciate being able to have those meetings. I, in particular, want to mention that we did advocate heavily for the bringing of Golden Dome assets to El Paso County. We know that we are a space hub, and we are aware that Space Command announcement was made on that, but we are really looking forward to all of the opportunities in front of us. I think those opportunities are great from the conversations that we're having, and that we will see significant movement of those types of investments here in El Paso County, so really looking forward to that, grateful for all the work that is being done to make sure that is happening. Particularly, I want to thank Congressman Crank for his work. He has just been a tireless advocate for making sure that our economy stays strong, that our ability to continue in those type of operations continues to be very strong. Also, Congresswoman Boebert, who has also been a tireless advocate as well, so really grateful to both of them in particular. I too think the opportunity to talk to business leaders in that setting, where we were all focused on those federal issues, was very valuable, particularly around some of the national defense conversation. I heard from so many business leaders there and also back here at home, how optimistic they are about the additional assets that will be located here, and so that was a very positive, a very positive experience, as well as just hearing from them about how the things and decisions that El Paso County is making to be business-friendly, and to continue to be aware of how regulations and other government overreach can affect our business community and the economy, so very valuable, and I expect, expect that we'll see quite a bit of communication continuing forward with that delegation as we move forward on some of the programming and some of the information that we brought to them, so grateful for that. Also, want to give a huge shout out to our Government Affairs Team, particularly Brandon Wilson, who was there as well to work to get those meetings scheduled and make sure that we had everything together for that process, so really great effort by the entire county to making meaningful impact and ensure that we are able to share our on-the-ground experience with our federal delegation to impact future federal policy decisions. With that, we can move to item eight.
Item number eight is community service organization reports, and there are none.
Item nine.
Item number nine is public comment on items not scheduled on the agenda, and Madam Chair, I'm unaware of anyone signing in ahead of time to speak today.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none in the room, do you have anyone online? Okay, well, since they are not available, we will move forward to item 10.
Item number 10 is the called-up consent calendar, and there are no items called up.
Item 11.
Item 11 is department and committee reports, non-action items, and there are none.
Item 12.
Item 12 is the addendum, and there are no addendums today.
Item 13.
Item 13 is the executive session, and there is no request for executive session.
Okay, with that, we've come to the end of this agenda. This meeting is adjourned.